Okay, today we have exonerations, eighteen listings, $6,049.27 for tax years 2012 and 2013. We have a request for a replacement ticket number 42140, the name of John R. Montgomery. Fiduciary orders, October 9, third quarter status report of Cynthia J. Stafford. And then you have an additional matter in front of you on an estate that needs approval or signature. Minutes of August 21, purchase orders and pay vouchers, general county fund, $92,428.82. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $28,619.94. Coal Severance Fund, $13,009.28.96 Cash, $3,044.45. Teen Court Cash, $10,775.09. Mason Dixon Park, $554.67. Magistrate Court Cash, $1,0440. Assessors Valuation Fund, $63,469, for total of $214,861.13. No bonds and no budget revision.
Move for approval. Second, I have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And you want to address this separately?
Pardon?
Do you want to address this separately?
This is the one by Cynthia Stafford. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I would move that we accept the fiduciary commissioner's quarterly status report from fiduciary commissioner Cynthia J. Stafford.
Second, I have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye.
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 Snuck out there. That one snuck in there.
Yeah. Stuck by us here. Okay. Go.
I just wanted to present to you the suspension list. These are properties that will be suspended from the tax lien sales due to bankruptcy or being certified to the state auditorium. I just need your approval.
Federal bankruptcy is, the difference between state and federal bankruptcy, I was always under the impression they couldn't exclude taxes.
We're not excluding them from paying the taxes. We're just suspending it from being sold for a tax lien.
Because the trustee.
They're still responsible for the taxes. We just won't be selling a lien against the property because they are in bankruptcy.
The, when they go into bankruptcy, all property goes to the trustee.
Okay, but they still have an obligation.
Absolutely.
They wouldn't not be excused.
Correct.
Do we need to accept this? I would move that we accept the suspension list.
I'll second, I have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Kella. Renetta.
Yes, request reimbursement today for the HUD grant for MEYSP for the months of July and August, $2,250.20. Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the senior Montingaleans of $2,000. This is going to fully expend their funds, so I also have a certificate of completion that requires president's signature. That's all the reimbursements that I have today.
Move for approval.
Second, I have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Also have a grant contract for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program. This one is for Arts Manongahela, and I have a resolution that is about. It resolved that the Montingale County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Elmay Callan, President of the Montingale County Commission, to act on its behalf by signing the contract with the West Virginia Development Office of Board to receive administered grant funds. Pursued to the provisions of the Community Participation Grant Program, funds in the amount of $3,000 are requested to provide assistance for the functions necessary to purchase equipment for Arts Manongahela. The project may include light fixtures, camera, and other equipments as funds permit.
Move for approval.
Second, I have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Okay, Rich.
Okay.
Proposals for preparation of subdivision regulations.
We had received two proposals to our RFP advertised place. And the first one, I think the first one in your list is Testa. That one came in yesterday. And to be honest, there's some value added here. The engineering firm and the Bowles Rice representatives that were, that they brought on as their team have had a lot of experience in developing subdivisions. And the Bowles Rice team, in fact, the head of the Bowles Rice team has already given us some good advice on the subdivision regs. My problem primarily with this is that they, while they're very experienced on the working end of developing subdivisions and that, there's no land use planner on their team. They've not ever developed subdivision regs. They've simply worked with subdivision regs. From a developer's point of view, their cost proposal was a range to be negotiated, and that was, it was $15,000 to $60,000. The other one that we had received was Civic Elements, and they have put together their proposals. It's, the principles involved there are land use planners who've worked with subdivision regs, prepared subdivision regs in the past. And they're proposing a lump sum price of $25,340. It would be my recommendation that we go with Civic Elements.
The only question I have is that, is on the one that furnished a cost of 10 to 60,000, 50,000.
15 to 60,000.
15 to 60,000. Is that whether or not we advertise that we would accept that.
Pardon?
That kind of a bid proposal.
We asked for a cost proposal.
Well, what's in my mind is that if you look at it and they say, well, we'll do it for $15,000, and they're $10,000 lower than the other bidder. So we're in a, we've got a dilemma.
Right, but you're requesting for services. It's not a price-based grant. It's not like going off the contract and you simply have to take the low bidder. What you're doing is you're evaluating the qualifications that have been presented. In this case, and a lot of times, particularly for architecture and engineering, you can't request a cost. This is planning, so it's not A and E. But under those circumstances, you have to base your decision on the qualifications. Then you negotiate the price. We specifically asked for a cost, cost in their proposal. That's what we received from theirs. Testa chose to give us a range based on negotiation. The other one gave us a lump sum price. But in either, even if you say for the sake of argument, Testa said, we'll do it for $15,000, $10,000 cheaper than the other. If they're not the best qualified, you don't have to hire them. And in my opinion, because they have no actual land use planners and no experience in actually developing a subdivision ordinance, the other group is the superior group based on qualifications.
So is that your recommendation?
My recommendation is for the Civic Elements.
Where's Civic Elements from?
Civic Elements is Chad who worked on, or Chet rather, who worked on the comprehensive plant. He's formed his own company now.
Oh, okay. I thought the name was... Chet Parsons?
Uh huh. He was with URS when he did the comprehensive plan.
Here's my concern. And I know, and I know these people very well. I mean, when they, when they say Steve Pruney and Seth Welsh, who know all about engineering and subdivision and everything, they are very, very, very extreme.
Steve, Steve was the one who contacted me to offer advice in working on the subdivision. And I've worked with Steve on several different cases. There's no question about that. However, his side is also pretty much on the development side. If you look at that, nowhere in their work are they talking about developing subdivision regulations. They're working with, negotiating through somebody's subdivision regulations. And what he specializes in is, is like the covenants and the organizational documents for subdivisions, not so much from the land use planning side. Again, I think there'd be some value added from the Testa group. I'd like to have some perspective from the development side. And I think at, you know, at some point, we're going to need engineering services as the planning commission to review these. So I think there's, there's a role that could be played down the road with these people. I think, you know, if something could be worked out for their review or something, that would be good. But in terms of actually developing the subdivision ordinances, I think the stronger case is made by Civic Elements.
My whole, my whole interest in this thing came about from the result of the people that keep coming in here with problem after problem after problem. And not only in here, to my, to my laws that come in. I bought this house, and I was told this, and they didn't tell me about this, and the roof's not finished, and the state highway can't fix it, and now no one paid it. Where, where, who's the developer? Well, who's so and so? Where's he at now? Oh, he's, he's in the Bahamas, wherever, you know? Heard that story over and over and over again. I've talked to developers, responsible community developers. They are very much in favor of that.
It levels the playing field.
Well, yeah. Because they, they, they got a commitment to this county, and they plan on staying there. So they're very much in favor of it. I'm just, I guess, my concern is a little bit like Bill's. Now, we're asking for $25,340, and I haven't studied this. I haven't had a chance to study this. But other than his planning background, the real expertise of how regulations will actually affect, and the, let's say, community support from other subdivision developers that are always scared of this kind of stuff, because you make up, people write up stuff in a vacuum, or in the back room, which, which we used to say about Charleston. They write up stuff in the basement of Charleston, and they send it up here, and they try to make us do it. And they don't know what the heck's going on. I'm not saying that that's the case here, because I haven't been able to study it. But I just wanted to tell you upfront what my, my concern is. I would, I would like to see a team that the responsible developers, who I've talked to and are very much supportive of this, but, and I put in friends, very scared that we'll make it a debacle, that will mess up everything, which can't happen. Is there any possible way that we could use both of them for services, since this is a service thing?
Such things have been done, where you've gotten two proposals and proposed that they maybe come together and work. I could see, I figure it would, that, that would not be a bad idea, although you're paying for both of them, so there could be some cost increase.
Yeah.
I understand, and they're...
Well, if I hear you correctly, what I'm hearing you say is that one of the bidders has a background in planning, but the other aspects of the development that they don't have. The legal aspects are always important with developers, and with any subdivision regulations, as we've experienced, that you're always going to have some developer that's going to want to take you to task. And that's where my concern comes up about the initial even proposals, because I don't know how vulnerable we are on the challenge of awarding this to someone that submitted a bid that could possibly, has the potential to be, $10,000 higher for the same work. Now, I know that we'd be subject to irresponsible decision-making of public funds. Why would we spend $10,000 more in public funds to get the same results? So we've got sort of a dilemma here in terms of looking just at qualifications without any definite prices, in terms of what's the cost going to be to the taxpayer. So...
My response from that perspective is what I told you before. You're basing it on qualifications, not on price. You're not obligated to take the lowest price. What we can do is certainly sit down with, with both parties, see, you know, explain what we feel the scope of work is going to entail. They can then determine a, a cost based on that discussion, and we can probably get a firm price from them. And we can also gauge whether there's any possibility of the two groups working together.
Now, I was under the impression, before we sit down with a potential bidder, we have to identify who the bidder is and award it.
Under A, under 8A, it's very prescribed. But 8A is for architectural and engineering services. You're talking about planning services here. They're not covered under 8A. So, or not 8A, it's something with a G, G6, G, anyway. The section of the law that has to do with bidding.
So we can't do that then legally, which is within the framework?
We can't do that. And certainly, at this point, you've taken no action. As the planning director representing the planning commission, I can certainly go back to this group and indicate that the county commission would like a firm price. We have one proposal with a firm price. We can at least do that much, I believe, and it'd still be legal with no question about that.
How about in terms of the comparison that you've made with background, lack of engineering services within the proposal, or the capability to do that? I mean, can we have them address that issue with you?
Sure.
So that we get communicated to us? Is that a critical part of this proposal? Is it not?
From my perspective, you're talking about producing a land use document. Zoning ordinances are land use documents, subdivision regulations are land use documents. I'm very uncomfortable with a proposal to produce a land use document if there isn't a single planner on the team. That was my biggest reservation with this. They're fine engineers, they're fine land use attorneys, they're not land use planners. And they're, they're going to produce a land use document, a land use planning document. So that was my principal reservation with them. I agree wholeheartedly that, and when I read it, and I, my preface to all of this, was there's definitely some value added by people who work with those documents after the fact and develop, actually develop subdivisions and put them together. I think that's a real valuable asset. But right now, I have the land use planners who do land use planning documents and the developers who develop those. I'm going with the ones who produce and have already produced land use planning documents in the past. Now, a merger of those two is not a bad idea. Might even be an ideal idea. But, you know, we can't assume that Group A and Group B are going to want to play together. But we can ask. And we can certainly clarify the cost. What they said is they would negotiate with us. Now, I don't, you know, I don't think there's a legal issue with saying, well, we want an idea of, at least narrow the range down, because that's a pretty big range. My guess is that it's going to be closer to the top end of the range than the bottom end of the range, but until you talk with them and see what they're looking at, you don't know that.
What do you think about pursuing the idea of you sitting down with both of them?
Yeah, no, you'd have to, you'd have to...
Exploring, exploring a number of items, a number of issues related to...
You'd have to, to negotiate with both parties. You couldn't, that, I think you would get into legal problems if you said, well, we want to just negotiate with this party and leave the other party out. You'd have to explain what the issues were presented to you, and here's where we're at, what would, what would your take be on that? So no, you'd have to negotiate with both parties and see. I mean, ideally, I guess in the best of all possible worlds, they would agree to work together and come back with a set proposed number and...
Well, this is, see, they're not going to be, whoever it is, they're not going to be working in a vacuum. I mean, anything that comes through has to come through the planning commission and through you, your office. I mean, so it's not like, it's not like if we go with this one, we'd have no planner. You're a planner. You're right there. And it has to go through you, and it goes through the planning commission. My, I just, I guess it's the emphasis, okay, that we're placing. Your background and experience is in this area, and you see that, you see the value of that. My emphasis is at the other end, not in drawing it up, but how it, how it plays out at the other end, and what the overall effect is. And that's why, for what, all I'm trying to do is explain, so you can... That's why I see this technical team that I've read, this is all I've had a chance to read, I haven't had a chance to study them. When I compare this technical team to this technical team, then there was a question as to which one I was going to agree with, it would be this one right here. So then to award it to this one, you know, that, that's another thing that perplexes me. Now, the ideal is just what you said. If we have these qualifications with these qualifications, I'm extremely happy. I'm just trying to explain to you what my quick, quick look at it is, because it's not enough just to pass regulations. It's not, what you have to be able to enforce, I mean, they have to be able to work on. And they have to, they can't be silly regulations that have economic consequence that harm people for no real purpose. And that's where this expertise comes in, melded with this expertise. But I know these are, people are very qualified because they've done other stuff that, that has held up well. So that's my concern.
I, I think we've reached a point where I think it's obvious that what we need to do, and I'll even make a motion to this effect, is to refer these two back to you, to get with the two, two bidders, and obtain additional information as related to the questions that have arisen as a result of this presentation.
Okay.
Then, then I would ask that you come back and present to us what the results of that is, and at that time, we will have a better chance to look through these proposals. And then with your additional recommendations, we should be able to make a pretty informed decision. And I'll move that we do that.
Second, I have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thanks, Rich. We appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll see you tonight.
Thanks, Rich.
Bob Dawson.
Yep, Vane and Latay property. So we have a house out on Route 7 and First Glove that belongs to Cynthia, and I think the first name is Richard. Yes, Richard? And here's a previous picture of when we could get on the property. Here's what it looks like back the way. And here it is, more of it. And we opened this file back in January 29th of 2013. Here's what it looks like today. They posted it to where we can't get on the property without a deputy, so we want to go with a formal complaint in writing, give them 90 days, if nothing, then we'll move on.
In other words, they didn't do anything except post it?
More or less, they have a steady game up.
How far out seven is this?
First Glove. I can take it out, and you can look at it.
No, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to remember. Can you see the building from the road?
That, that's from the road. Those three on top are from the road.
Okay. I don't work it out. I don't work it out.
It's up on the hillside.
Will we just ring it to you all to go with a formal complaint in writing from the commission, and if that doesn't do no good, 90 days will go on.
Move to go with formal complaint.
Second, I have a motion, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, thank you.
You have any correspondence, Diane?
No.
Okay, move on to unfinished business, collaboration agreement, baseball complex.
Actually, it's the design-build performance criteria. We did the collaboration this week.
What's that?
This is the design-build performance criteria that Bobby and Jan leave out on the committee and working for. This is their final...
Yeah, I thought we approved that. I thought, I thought this was a final acceptance.
No, we already did that those months ago.
We don't have that on the agenda.
It's not to be signed, it's just for your...
Just receipt?
For their review. Is that correct?
We're just, we're just acknowledging receipt of it.
Yeah.
Receipt and, and accepting it so we can move on as the criterion.
Well, how can we accept it? We can't accept it. It's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
That is my fault. I guess I'll have to postpone it a little.
We'll have to put it back on the next one. We can't, we can't take formal action.
I went over it, I told you guys I'd go over it.
Wouldn't that be considered an agenda item?
It's not a collaboration agreement. She put the...
It's designed-built.
Oh.
It's, it's the acceptance of the, the design.
And I went over it, and, and what you all wanted in there, we made sure, because they said if, if feasible, if the money was available, they would put that picnic area in, and it's already in there. The roof overhang that everybody was worried about is in there. The electric for the concert's down on the lower part, two 400 amp panels with twist lock plugs, it's all included. So everything that we more or less asked for...
We'll have to put it on our next agenda item. We each got copies, or you just got one?
I just had the one.
Okay, well, don't make copies.
No, I give everybody a copy two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, so you can look at it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I thought there was additional changes to it.
No, no, I just wanted, that, that was a final draft after the changes have been made.
Oh, so we have, we have, that we have...
It was supposed to be on last week.
Is the same one as this?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was supposed to be on last week's, and I forgot to tell Diane, and we put it on, but it was the wrong wording. So I would say we're more or less, are we happy? Does anybody see anything wrong with it that I can tell them we can go ahead and keep moving? So we don't slow nothing down.
I didn't see anything wrong with it, but it's just, we, we've got to have it on the agenda. We can't approve it without it being on the agenda.
Yeah.
Technicality.
It's technicality, yeah.
I understand.
But it's one that we get in trouble with if we don't pay it.
Well, if someone should decide to challenge something, then I think your point's well made, then...
But I, I will go ahead and tell Bill that we're happy with the contents, and we will put it on agenda.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pledge, pledge agreement for it.
Oh, well, it'd be 23rd then, because that's, that's why we're two weeks...
That's fine.
But I'm just going to go ahead and proceed on everything. But I'm just going to go ahead and proceed on everything, because I don't see anything throwing the brakes on. I hope not.
Sounds good. Pledge agreement form.
This is a form we had last week, but I couldn't notarize it and sign it too, so it just had to be re-signed.
You couldn't notarize it?
No.
Why couldn't we notarize it?
Because I'm one of the contact people.
Oh, yeah, and someone else notarized it?
No.
Sign more, most of them.
Authorizing.
One goes in Smith, so I'm using around the library Congress.
Almost, I'm almost root to Elwood there, Cliff.
I don't sign twice?
No.
You sign twice, I would get to sign once.
Your turn next year.
No, 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 Mr. Tom.
Okay. Discussion and consideration of adoption of reimbursement resolution relating to the proposed renovation of the post office, blah, 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 blah. County Corrid House Annex, which resolution would permit the reimbursement of costs for such projects from proceeds of tax exempt financing obligations that may be issued for such projects in the maximum principal amount of twenty million dollars. Okay, what this is, is as, as we are continuing our, uh, finalization to get renovations done to the, uh, new judicial annex, is, um, we, as everyone knows, we obviously got to have to, to borrow the money to do that. We're not saying it's going to cost twenty million dollars, but, uh, we're saying simply that we are, uh, looking for no more than twenty million dollars. And this reimbursement resolution gives us, uh, the ability to, uh, go back and recoup any expenses we've paid from this date sixty days prior. So, uh, that's, uh, given the fact that we're moving, we're so close, we might as well go ahead and pass it at this point.
And that could be a significant amount, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about in excess of a million dollars, aren't we? For, uh, some of the work that's already been completed. So, I'll move for approval.
Second, I have a motion and second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, unfinished business, um, continued, proposed agreement regarding Hartman Run apartment, Hartman Run Bridge with the Hartman Highway.
I'd like, a question, has Phil Maygro reviewed this?
No, he has not.
I, I would like to, at this point, just make, move that we refer this to our legal counsel for review, and then back with his reaction, call next story.
In just my review, when in paragraph number seven, they talk about accepting our money, but then they didn't talk about taking over the bridge immediately, so actually prepare a letter to them, but that is not word of the way you...
I mean, there's not, there's no paragraph in here that's saying that they will, that they will take ownership of the bridge?
It doesn't say that, they will take it over immediately upon that first five hundred thousand dollar deposit.
Now, the, the language is not there that they'll accept the responsibility.
Well, that's, that's another good reason for, have Phil look at it, and, uh, so that you can include that, that one in there, anything else Phil might see, that no use to do it once and then do it again. Hey, Phil might not see anything other than that, and then if that's all he sees, if he sees everything else, okay, then you just ship the letter.
It looks like it's a result of seven, the language would indicate that, that, uh, if, if the signing of this agreement indicates that it's accepted into the, uh, the state highway system, then of course they would have responsibility, that's inherent in, in the statement. Uh, because it says commission should have no maintenance responsibility for the bridge. That's after it's accepted into the system. So, uh, I think we need to ask Phil in terms of, to address that issue. If, if that's what it means, then we're okay. If that's not what it means, but of course, we're better off it's clear and not left to interpretation.
I think, I think you're right. I, I, I think, I think they are saying in that, in that paragraph, that, in paragraph eight, but, uh, but I think Diane's point is well taken.
Yeah, it should be clear.
There's a question between the first five hundred thousand and the second five hundred thousand, two items, that that's sort of a gray area. Okay, we'll just do that. New business, acceptance of Montague County Bar Association's representative to Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission.
And we have a memo on that from Monica Hadad.
Go ahead.
Uh, in the code, being familiar with the Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission statute, uh, the bar association does have the authority and the prerogative of appointing one member. And they want to reappoint, uh, J. Douglas Crane, and I would move that we accept that.
I'll second that. Uh, I have a motion and second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Post for the county commissioners.
I got a couple of things. One, I was reviewing the agreement, uh, on the ambulance service, emergency services in the county, and, uh, the original agreement goes back to nineteen eighty-two, and the commission at that time relinquished all control over emergency services in the county. Uh, and that agreement, uh, in addition to the opinion by Phil Maygro, which I looked over, uh, still stands. For us to make any changes to that, which would be in line with what Mike Wolf is recommending of nine-one-one, and also with the recent change of, uh, the recommendation of Star City to call Star City Ambulance within their municipal boundaries to be the first call, uh, we have to request a hundred and eighty days in advance, six months, uh, change in a memorandum of understanding, which means that we would have to act before January one in notifying Mon, Mon ambulance EMS service that we wish to sit down and renegotiate this, uh, memorandum of understanding, and at that time, based upon the recommendation of our legal counsel, we could incorporate that within the municipal limits of Star City, Star City Ambulance would be the number one caller, and, and Mon EMS would be the second caller. And that also is required for, for nine-one-one to get direction, to call Star City as the first called in Star City. So, uh, I, I would, as correspondence, I, I, I would move that we, uh, uh, send out the letters to the appropriate parties and tell them that we do want to re, renegotiate the memorandum of understanding for emergency services in Montague County. Also, we've been invited to a meeting of the Doctors of Medical Association in the county to address this topic, they have some questions and issues, and I, I think this is the appropriate way to go, it's, it's the way we have to go, uh, to do it right.
Well, I, I'll, uh, agree that, uh, it's better, it's better to be well ahead of time, so they know that this is going to be a topic for discussion.
Yeah, right.
What's changed and what isn't, we have no idea, we're still working on, but giving the notice I'm all in favor for, shall I second that? Uh, I have a motion and second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Anything further, Bill?
Yes, we have addition, uh, we have additional information on those two issues, the matters we discussed about, uh, the possibility of pursuing, uh, placing countywide zoning on the ballot, and, and as well as moving from three to five commissioners. Uh, we also have correspondence back from the, uh, legal counsel, as well as Marsha Ashton, the prosecutor attorney who heads up the office, and her short version is that, uh, you know, and I should add that Carrie Blaney's been very helpful and gave me copies of the code and whatnot, and I'll give you, share this with you, uh, that the bottom line is that we can't use the ballot for survey, poll, to gauge, okay? Uh, the only thing that can be placed on the ballot is what the statute allows the authority for the body to place on the ballot. Uh, and, and in talking to Rich Wood about zoning, he seems to feel that we can do that, uh, on the zoning issue like we did for West Run, that that could be handled in the same fashion. But I'm not real sure that, uh, that we can do that. I think we'd need a legal opinion if, because based upon what we've received up to this point, is we, we, we have to have the authority to do that, and, and no one cited that authority yet. In fact, all the information we have would be counter to us being able to do that without petitions. And, and with the word petitions leading into three to five commissioners, it's a lengthy project. Uh, the, to move, for this county to move from three to five commissioners, this body would have to decide where it wanted to move to.
Right, what type of reorganization.
And you pointed that out, there's several options. And, and then there would have, it would require a petition from, from ten percent of the registered voters, uh, and then it would require the approval of the legislature. So, uh, that...
Before it even gets on the ballot.
That, that's correct. So, uh, you know, I'm not real sure, uh, that the public is ready for that, that the people in Montague County is ready for long drawn out issues here, uh, and whether the need would identify the priority of trying to, to pursue this in, in different ways. I think it might be the most expedient way to, to seek public input is to hold a public hearing.
Talking about that.
Just, we can do that, we can hold a public hearing and, and advertise it, just to gauge the reaction of the people in regards to countywide zoning and in regards to three to five commissioners. Now, the one thing with countywide zoning, and I think you pointed out, I'm almost positive you did, is that we would have to exclude West Run...
Yeah.
...from any vote on the ballot, those precincts, and we'd have to exclude all municipalities. That presents another complex issue, as we found out with, with West Run, because precincts cross lines. And, and so for the county clerk to have to identify legitimate voters, uh, who live outside of a municipality and outside of West Run area, because only those people could vote on a countywide vote for, for zoning. So, that presents another complicating issue. So, I just share that information back, that, uh, maybe we just need to think about it and, and decide maybe on our next meeting whether we do, and, in fact, want to pursue public hearings to gauge the public's, uh, feelings in regards to those two issues.
I appreciate all your research on that, and looking at that, uh, because it, it just amazes sometimes to me how one good idea creates all kinds of complexities.
It's not always as simple as it...
But yeah, if the people we represent tell us, do this.
In fact, on, on, on Star Trek one time, uh, I, I recall, uh, Mr. Spock telling Captain Kirk that the zarring is sometimes much more enjoyable than having.
Well, that, and that's the thing about, you know, because, and I pointed this out the last time, but I'll just add it again, you know, there's three, you know, everyone keeps talking about five commissioners. Well, what you're talking about is a reorganization of county government, and it's what you're really talking about. And it always comes back to the same question, what is it you're trying to accomplish? You want to spend an extra three hundred thousand dollars to have a three-two vote instead of a two-one vote? Is it worth that much? I don't know, I, I'm pretty petty.
Yeah, I, I think it needs really further thought, and, and I'm not real sure we got a good reading on the general public's, uh, position. Uh, I know that back when, there was a lot of discussion, and, and I was even saying that I favored moving from three to five if, and this was the if...
If.
If the five representatives would all come from different parts of the county. That doesn't seem to be practical or possible. So, my support of five commissioners has changed, uh, just simply because if you can't get fair representation of the whole county with, with increasing the numbers, then it defeats the purpose of increasing the numbers. And countywide zoning, you know, it's, I think there's mixed feelings out there, although I think as Montague County progresses, we have seen the indicators of the frustrations and the disappointments of property owners with the lack of zoning laws.
Well, I agree with that, because there's still, there's still parts of this county that it would be a waste of resources to zone. You know, there's certain parts. Identifying those parts and figuring out who's the voters in those parts or who isn't, and being able to vote on, that makes it difficult.
Yeah, it does.
So, I, I agree with that, we'll keep working on that, but if we have a public hearing on, on reorganizing the county government, uh, that, that, I think that would be, I think that would be very good, and actually have a formal presentation, which I wouldn't have no problem doing, just right off the, right out of the statute, showing the, all, all the alternatives, and these are just examples, code said these are examples, you can modify those further, although when you get to the legislature, the legislature is going to lack us to modify, but the code says we can. And so they know the different options. And it, and it always comes back to that same question, which I think you've always agreed with, is what is it you're trying to accomplish? What do you want to do? What are you going to accomplish? I know so, I know some people want five commissioners, because they think they can fill the other two seats if there are more people there, I know that.
Well, they, they, sometimes they need to remember what, what, uh, Mr. Spock said.
I agree. Well, thank you. I don't, I, I don't think I really have anything further. Ports for elected officials. Mr. Assessor.
Well, yeah, I guess it would be the time to, I do have one thing. As I presented to the commission as a letter, uh, in our agreement with Tyler Technology, I have gone ahead and terminated the contract as of December thirty-first of two thousand thirteen. We've decided to go ahead and move forward with our office in our county, and, uh, this was a good time to do it. And, uh, so I presented that to their individuals, they've accepted it, and, uh, so again, as of December thirty-first, originally, that was to end February twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen. So, we've got about fourteen months in there. So, you know, they've moved us a few steps forward, now it's going to be us trying to brainstorm to get us where we need to be to establish with our compliance with the code, so.
I would, I would just like to make a comment, if I might, uh, I would like to thank you in your office for returning the assessor's office and the assessment process back to the people of Montague County. And thank you.
Well, I mean, it was, it was something that I've been working on since January, but more to see things go through the process and get an understanding of what's needed. You know, this is, in our opinion, this was the right course to go, granted, because it is, we're in a very difficult situation with our county right now, trying to get us back up to where we need to be. And it's not a one-year process, a two or an overnight type thing. And I know it's patience of everyone around us, not in our office, but our whole county. But we're, we're doing that, and, and I think this, we feel good about our decision. Uh, of course, I wouldn't have done it, I didn't feel good. But it's the right time, and, uh, it, it does, it'll be back to us to go ahead and get us to where we need to be and to keep us there, so. And we're ready for that challenge.
How did you and Cliff enjoy the leadership campaign?
Well... Outside of, this is called Elwood.
I had to bring that up.
But I have to admit, you handled that well.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say anything, we didn't know if you really caught it, because it was inside or what, but it's a change, I mean, for Cliff, it was a change, but I have one else now.
Well, you know what I told him? If anyone buys us a drink, Cliff and I a drink, they're going to buy us... Well, you know what I told him? If anyone buys us a drink, Cliff and I a drink, they gotta buy us two drinks. One for each one of us.
But it was entertaining. And I thought it was a good today. Actually, we were there on Friday and it was very good.
That's great. I wish I could have made it. I just had too many other things going on.
But outside of that, you know, the group's all finishing up unions still, so get that whole process done.
Thank you very much. Sheriff, do you have anything for us?
I do. Two things, not just one, two things. First of all, just to let you know, we had an incident happen this morning, late this morning in an apartment. One of our processor, process servers was attacked by a dog out at Mount Year Village Trail Park. Pretty severely. He has some pretty bad injuries on his right arm, his right ankle. He's still at the hospital. Getting those tended to and has to get sewn up. Frank DeWitt, I assume it was, I think he was attacked pretty...
When did that happen?
Was probably about 10:30 this morning.
10:30, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, about nine o'clock, I'm sorry. 10:30 was at the hospital and everything.
It wasn't a directed attack, was it, by the owner of the dog?
It wasn't. It's, it's a shepherd pit bull mixed dog and the owner opened the door and the dog just... So he's, it's pretty severe injuries, but I wanted to commend the Canine Adoption Center for getting their folks out there as quickly as they did to get the dog under control. The dog is at the adoption center now. Still trying to figure out if it's had all of its appropriate shots and stuff. The owner doesn't appear to have any records. So we hope that they can find it. It does, so that Frank doesn't have to go through any of those shots and processes. And secondly, Kelly and I attended the West Virginia Association of Counties Conference this past three days, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday in Ogilvy Park. Very productive meeting, I thought. All the member associations brought up their legislative agendas. We went over those. Those were voted on. The ones that will be supported by the Association of Counties. And it was a pretty, pretty productive conference. So that's, that's my...
Thank you, Sheriff. Diane? Bobby?
Just for, I told Mark, and just so the sheriff knows and any other elected officials, there is a groundbreaking for the new baseball park October 17th, Thursday at 1:00, so...
That's right. We won't have another meeting between then.
No, that's all I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
What, what time is it?
1:00 on Thursday the 17th.
I'm sure Ben will get it in the paper for us probably, probably a couple times between now and then.
That's open to the public too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's at 1:00 you said?
Yes, sir.
At the site.
At the site.
Groundbreaking.
If you don't know where the site is, just go past Walmart.
Look over the hill.
Look over the hill. Keep going. I told people to go, they need to go look at it now because it's not gonna look the same very shortly. Renata? Jim?
I have one thing.
One thing. There we go.
Justine McCoy is with us here today. She's our new park superintendent at Chestnut Ridge Park and she wanted to come down to observe a commission meeting. And I think she's doing her paperwork anyway. She just thought today would be a good day to come up and do it. But I just wanted to introduce her to you guys, but you know her anyway. But I just wanted to introduce her that she was here.
We appreciate that and I want to mention that that was a nice, it was a large turnout. That was a very nice ceremony we had for the decent bits in Historical Park. We recognized the two families, the Baird family and the Powell's family. And I hope we got some good pictures and pictures of the family in there. That would be good. So that was a nice ceremony. So pass that on to the board, please.
Okay, comments from the public? Do we have any public?
I'd like to make one comment. Bobby, Bobby, we had a little project and actually it wasn't small. It might sound was, we purchased large screen TVs and Blu-ray DVD players for the senior centers to, and community centers to help generate a possible community night or movie night. And Bobby has all those in with the exception of one and there's a reason for that is there was a family situation with one of the people there. So I'd just like to, sometimes we, we hear too much about complaints of things not getting done and not enough about things that do get done. And, and I think this is a day maybe we can pass out some job well done, Bobby. And there's, there's going to be a lot of people that benefit from that, I think. And also Diane, we had recently a lot of, you know, the Western Ray annexation and other correspondence and everything else. I mean, the workload and I know she put in some of her own time to get, get the things completed. And I tell you, when these two people leave this commission, I'm not going to be on this commission because there's going to be a void that I'm not real sure that is going to be able to be replaceable. So we need to prohibit both of them from going at the same time and we need to prohibit them from going for a few years.
Yeah, well, I've said that all along. They're not going anyplace.
But thank, thank you to both. Thank you to both of you.
Yeah, we have an excellent staff. We really do. And we've got excellent people, the perks and Janet, she's just as steady as could be. She gets those minutes done. Just luck guy. And you know Kelly, she's just always on top of stuff. She keeps us informed. She keeps running me down for my signature though. She's always good at that. Here, sign this, sign this. She likes radar though. She's like, it's top secret. You can't see it. And then we got Ben. We always depend on Ben getting the news out for us. We appreciate that, Ben. Okay, any comments from the public?
Move for adjournment.
Second, I have a motion to adjourn, a motion in the second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. 2:00, come back at 2:15 for a work session.